Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Advocates for Angels Town Hall Weekly Meeting. I'm Valerie Aprahamian, the IEP Navigator, and I help parents receive the special education program their child deserves, both in school and in life after high school. And tonight, I'm going to be talking about the seven steps for IEP success. So, over the past, basically, six months really till school, since school closed in March, I've been talking about the virtual schooling, and I've been teaching on seven steps of successful advocacy, which is also what I teach in my monthly parent membership, the Parent Brigade, which is a paid monthly membership in which I coach, teach, and support parents with the curriculum that they need for the seven steps to be successful, not only during virtual schooling, but basically, it's the basic seven steps to become a powerful and informed and empowered parent advocate. So that's what I'm going to be reviewing tonight. So I'm going to be sharing my screen because I have a visual on those seven steps because I still think, even though I've been teaching on it, that a lot of parents still aren't clear on the seven steps. So we're going to be looking into visual tonight, and hopefully, I'm going to go through each step very slowly. Now, for any parents that are on this call that aren't in the Parent Brigade, it's probably going to seem like a lot of unfamiliar information because you're not going to know exactly how to do this because you're going to need more than just the, you know, narrative or definition for each one of these steps because you're going to need the scripts and the templates and some coaching on how to be successful with these steps. But nevertheless, I'm going to go over those steps. Now, the parents that are in the Brigade are going to be very familiar with these steps, but I'm going to be going over them in more depth so that everybody's clear on it and can really understand that these are the steps that I use, these are the steps that I do, as well as the steps that attorneys do in taking parents through the process to get what their child needs, whatever that may be. So, I'm just hoping that it's going to tell me if someone needs to be admitted when I'm in this mode. I think it still does. So, okay, so let's start with step number one. So, the first thing you're going to want to do is call your IEP meeting. So you make your request for an IEP meeting. If you don't have an IEP meeting already coming up, you're going to want to request an IEP meeting because whatever you want changed, added, or you want your concerns addressed, you have to do it in an IEP meeting. So you call your IEP meeting, and you do it through documentation, always in writing. You never do anything verbally. You always do it in writing. If you do it verbally, you always follow it up in writing, whatever your request was. So in writing, you're going to request your IEP meeting. In California, they must hold an IEP meeting within 30 days. If you're not in California, you check your state timeline for your school district to hold an IEP meeting. So you ask for your meeting. Within 30 days, they have to schedule your meeting and have a meeting. That is the law, state law, and as I said, it depends on what state you're in. Some states, it's 45 days. Some states, it's longer. Okay, so you, prior to your IEP meeting, you're going to develop your parent agenda. Now, in your parent agenda, you're going to identify all of your concerns. You're going to identify all of your requests, and you're going to be very specific with what your concerns and your requests are. So, and then I also include in the parent agenda, the parent concerns and priorities statement. So the statement is basically just a paragraph. I don't, I try not to make, you know, you don't write a book of three pages of what you're concerned about. You're very specific, and you try to keep it to a paragraph of what your main concerns are and what you're not happy about, and you put that in a narrative. Now, why do you do that? Because in the IEP, there is actually a section, and it's like on the second or third page of the IEP, that it actually says, "Parents and Concerns Priority Statement." And then there's a little box there for, that they type in what the parents' concerns and priorities are. Well, when you're in your IEP meeting, if you've just verbally say that to whosever taking notes, they transcribe it into their own words, and it's not your words. And then they read it back to you, and it kind of sounds like what you said, but it really doesn't. And it, and it never gets down to the actual facts or the actual point of what you're trying to make. So, what your narrative in your parent agenda does is it gives them exactly the words, your words, of what they can actually take, copy what your statement said, into that section in the IEP, in your words. So that is powerful, parents. Don't let them interpret what you say verbally, and then type it into the IEP. Write it down and say, "I want this typed into the IEP because these are my words, and this is what I want in the IEP." Now, why is that important? Because the, everything is documentation, documentation, documentation. You want to have a paper trail. You want to create evidence of what you're concerned about. The more documentation they have of what your concerns are and your requests are, the more you are building your case to win whatever it is you want to win. So, when it's in your parent and concerns priority statement, you know, and you have three IEPs, you can go back and say, "Look, three times I said, this is what I'm concerned about. This is what I want, and you still haven't gotten what you want." So you always are thinking about, "I need to create a paper trail. I need to have evidence to show that I am unhappy." Because many times when parents come to me, and I get their, all their IEPs, I get their CUM file, and I look back at all the IEPs, and I go, "There's, I can't find one single statement in any of these IEPs that says that you were concerned about this or that, why they came to me to hire me for over what reason it was. There's nothing in the IEP that ever says that the parent was unhappy or that the parent wanted something different, and that's because they didn't write it in there." And, and then the, and then the parent, you know, says, "Well, they didn't give it to me, and then, and I never got what I wanted." And I said, "Well, there's nothing documented in your IEP that you even, ever even asked for it." So it's extremely important to make sure your parent agenda, another piece of evidence that you're asking and you're concerned, that's what, why the parent agenda is so important. Plus, they must go over your parent agenda, read it, and address each one of your issues. If they don't, you're going to say, "We didn't talk about issue number two on my parent agenda," and you refer them back to your parent agenda. So that's how you have your IEP meeting. So now, your concerns and your requests have been addressed at the IEP meeting, and they've been documented into the IEP. Now, what happens with that is when they are documented into an IEP, then the district must respond to that. So the next step is, number two, after you have your IEP, and they give you your offer of FAP, then you're going to write a partial agreement, okay? So now, in your partial agreement, you're going to write, "I agree to move forward with my IEP except for," and then the things that they didn't give you. So whatever they didn't agree to give you, whatever things you're in a disagreement in, you're going to list those things in your partial agreement. So that's the, and a partial agreement is really the same thing as 1B on your signature page, on your signature page when you sign. 1A is, "I agree to the IEP in full." 1A. 1B says, "I agree to the IEP except for," and then they have a little tiny line about this big. And what if you have, you know, five things that you're in disagreement with? How are you supposed to write on that little tiny line? That's what, why a partial agreement is, gives you the ability to write, actually, "These are the things I'm in disagreement with, and this is why." So again, you're building your case, you're showing evidence, and you can be specific in your partial agreement. Let me give you an example. Let's say you're, I've been coming up with this with a lot of my Parent Brigade members. They want a reading program because their kid either has dyslexia or they're behind in reading. So you, they're very, when I coach them through this, they're going to write in their partial agreement, my, the, the scores of where their child is in deficit. So you go back to your psychoeducational assessment because evidence is facts, and facts are standardized test scores. And where do you find those standardized test scores? In the psychoeducational assessment. So you go back and you pull out all those scores that are the deficit range, and you put them in your partial agreement. This is why my child needs a reading program because their reading scores in comprehension are far below average. Their reading scores in fluency are far below average, and so on and so forth. So you put the scores in there, okay? And then, along with many other things that you could add to substantiate your request. The same thing if it was speech and language. You can write, if you're requesting speech and language, you would go back to the last speech and language assessment, and you would pull out that evidence of where your child is behind and their deficit areas of speech and language, and you would put them in your partial agreement. So now, as I said, all of that is what I teach in the Parent Brigade, how you would write your partial agreement, but that's step number two. Then, after the district receives your partial agreement, they have to respond to your areas of dissent, and they also have to respond to your requests in your IEP. So they're going to give you a PWN, which stands for Prior Written Notice. A prior written notice is a legally binding letter that the district must provide a parent when a parent asks for something in writing, okay? So every time you ask for something in writing, parents, either in an email, in a letter, or in an IEP, they have to respond to you with a PWN. That's the law. If they don't give you a PWN, they have violated the law. PWNs must be provided within 10 to 15 days, okay? There's no law that says an exact timeline, but best practices are, and, and a judge and the state expects the districts to respond to a parent request within 10 to 15 days, okay? So that's about the average of when you should get it. If it's past 15 days, and they haven't given it to you, I'd wait a couple days. If it goes to 20 days, they're basically late on getting you a response with a PWN, okay? That's the next step. What's going to happen is you're going to get your PWN from the district. And the district is either going to say, "Yes, we're going to give you what you're asking for, Mom," and it's going to explain in the PWN what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. Or it's going to say, "No, the district disagrees, and the district denies your request." And then they're going to give you the reasons why they deny your request, okay? So if they deny your request, which probably they're going to do, so let's talk about the "no" parents, you're probably going to get a "no." 99.9% of the time, you're going to get a "no." That's, it doesn't mean "no," though. It's just their response to any request that a parent asks, especially if it's going to cost them money, they're going to say "no." That's their first response is "no" because they're going to test you and see, "What are you going to do next? Are you going to give up and go away because they said 'no' in a prior written notice?" The prior written notice is only a formality, you guys. It doesn't mean "no." It's just, they say "no." That's their first, you know, knee-jerk reaction, "No." But then you take the next steps to get to the "yes." So I've said this before too, many times. I've gotten "no's" sometimes, three, four, five, six "no's." I've gotten "no's" for over a year, but then I will get to the "yes" eventually. If you go hire an attorney, attorneys take a year to go through the whole process, and it's this same process. Sometimes there's assessments that have to be done in there. You have to get an IEE, a second opinion from a private agency or a private provider to build the evidence because that's what lawyers do, the same thing. They build the evidence to prove that the district must say "yes." And doing that, building the evidence, takes time. It doesn't happen in one or two meetings. You have to go through this process to win, okay? So, you're going to get the "no" first, and then, that's great, now you got the "no." Now you can go on to step number four. Step number four is your parent letter that you're responding to their PWN. So now you're going to give them one more chance to change their minds and say "yes." So you're going to write your parent letter, which is going to say, "In response to your prior written notice, district, this, this is why you should be agreeing to what I want." And then you're going to list the evidence again. Maybe at this point, you've gotten another IEE assessment or whatever additional evidence you've gathered, you're going to add to that parent letter in response to their prior written notice that said "no," okay? So that's the parent letter, which again, it's in my Parent Brigade. I give the templates. I, I, I teach on how to do that. Parents have one-on-one consultations with me, and I help them write the parent letter so it's legally sound and it's strong so that the district, you know, to push them into saying "yes." So that's the parent letter. Now, also, in there, the, the district might then give you another prior written notice in response to your parent letter. They may, or they may not. Because if they already said "no" in number three, then they might, they, they might can say, "Well, we already told you 'no' in number three, so we're not even going to respond to your parent letter." But they might give you a response to your parent letter, okay? Either one. They don't really have to by law. If it's the same thing that you asked for before, and they already gave you a prior written notice, they might not, but they might. So you might get another PWN. That's why I have that in number four, okay? But nevertheless, they're just going to say "no" again, most likely, but maybe you'll get lucky, and they'll say "yes" after you write your parent agenda. Your, I mean, your parent letter in step number four. You never know, you know, you, I never can predict how long it's going to take, how many steps you're going to have to go through. Every case is different. Every situation is different. Every district is different. So you, these are the steps, and it's, it's always variable in, in this process, okay? So then, the next step you would take, now, this is outside of the IEP, okay? So you've gone through the IEP process. You responded to your IEP with your partial agreement. You got your prior written notice response from the district. You wrote your parent agenda in response to their PWN. Now, the fifth step is, you call an informal dispute resolution meeting. This is with the Director of Special Education. So you would write an email to your director and say, "I have received a PWN in response to my requests that I made at my IEP meeting on October 10th, and I am requesting an informal dispute resolution meeting with you to, in order to resolve my dissent to my, to the district's offer of FAP." FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education, okay? Which districts are mandated to provide every child at an IEP. A "free" means there's never any cost to you, the parent. "Appropriate" means it meets your child's needs by addressing every area of deficit that impede your child to receive educational benefit, meaning your child is learning and progressing towards their goals. That's what "FAP" means, okay? So you're going to have your informal dispute resolution meeting. Now, what are you going to do there? You're going to bring in all of your evidence to show. So you're going to be sitting at the, in the office. Hopefully, you know, this is typical when we don't have COVID, you would go to the, to the district office, and you would meet with the director, and you would lay out all of your evidence, and you would show the director your evidence, and you would tell them your story and why the director should change her mind and give you what you want. And of course, I coached my parents through that too, how to prepare for that, what to expect, how to have your, your evidence all organized, how to present your evidence, and deliver that information to the director, okay? So that, at that point, the director is either going to tell you, "Yes, okay, we'll do that," or she's going to negotiate with you. So it's really a negotiation meeting with the director. So the director might say, "Well, I'll give you this, but I'm not going to give you that." Or, you know, "I'll give you half of what you want," or "I'll give it to you for, you know, a year, but not two years." So it's, it's a, it's a transaction that where you're, that you're negotiating on. And so you have to really just, you know, and I, again, you know, this is all variable. There's so many different things that could happen in that informal dispute resolution, but it's basically just learning really good negotiation skills and having, I, I teach my parents that you have your list of priorities of, "This is, this is my, you know, shoot for the moon, what I would really want, and then here's what I, I won't settle for. I have to get this, but I'll settle for that." So I, so we write out our list of what is actually negotiable or, and what's non-negotiable in that transaction and in that negotiation that you have with your director. So again, that's more intensive teaching and coaching that I provide in the Parent Brigade. Okay, so then, hopefully, you're going to get, at least in that meeting, something of what you want, okay? So, as I said, there's much more I could talk about, but I'm not going to go into depth on the informal dispute resolution other than that. And so then, after that, what the director is going to do is she's either going to provide you with the "yes" that you got, either in a settlement, what's called a settlement agreement, or she's going to say, he or she is going to say, "I'm going to send you back to the IEP team," and they're going to document it in the IEP. So it has to be documented somewhere that you're going to get what you asked for, and it's either going to be in what's called a settlement agreement, or it's going to be documented in the IEP. And she'll let your program specialist know, "You're going to agree to set this, 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 and this, and you're going to document it in the IEP." So it's all going to be taken care of before you go to the IEP. You're going to go to the IEP. You're going to present your request again, and the program specialist is going, "Yes, we're going to grant your request, Mom," and she documents it in the IEP. If it's a settlement agreement, a settlement agreement is a legal document that, that they write outside of the IEP meeting, that the director writes, and it basically outlines what you asked for and that they're going to give it to you. Now, the settlement agreement takes more negotiation, okay? Because the settlement agreement, they're going to try to give you the least amount that they possibly can. So they're going to try to screw you on some things. So let me give you an example. So, so I'll give you an example of one of the Parent Brigade members that, that we just went through the whole process, and she went, got a settlement agreement, and I helped her negotiate her settlement agreement. So she asked for a school, a non-public school for kids with dyslexia, and she got it. She won for three years, three whole years at a non-public school for kids with dyslexia, you know, at about the tune of about $60,000 a year, somewhere between $55,000 and $65,000 a year, it could even be higher than that. For three years, she won. Now, in the settlement agreement, the, it says, you know, "We're granting you three years of funding enrollment at this non-public school." However, she didn't offer the parent transportation, which is thousands of dollars a year because they pay a private agency to transport kids to non-public schools, and it's a lot of money. She didn't offer her that, and she didn't offer to pay for the speech and language services and the OT services that were on that kiddo's IEP. Well, that's not okay. She has to pay for the transportation, and she has to continue to provide the speech and OT services on the child's IEP. So I, I helped the mom say, "Oh, no. Now you go negotiate with her and say, 'I, I need transportation, and I also need my child, my child continues to qualify for speech and occupational therapy, and he still needs that for the next three years.'" So then they went back and forth a couple other times, and she got that. She was able to also negotiate the director to include not only the tuition for three years, but also to continue her speech and OT as listed on the IEP, and also transportation to and from the non-public school. So that was a settlement agreement and negotiation to get everything you want documented in that settlement agreement. Now, if, after you have your dispute, informal dispute resolution meeting, and you don't get the "yes," okay, in your informal dispute resolution meeting, then you would go to step number seven, which is then you file a compliance complaint with the California Department of Education. If you're in another state, you would, you would file the complaint with the Arizona Department of Education, the Utah Department of Education, whatever state you're in, you file it with your Department of Ed, and OCR is the Office of Civil Rights, which is ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And again, in every state, it would be, or maybe that's federal, the ADA. I think that's federal, actually, because ADA is federal. So, but, and in, in any case, it's the Office of Civil Rights, and that is also a complaint because it's discrimination. Many of these cases are discrimination cases because the ADA says that every school district must provide access to education for every child in an IEP. And if they're not meeting the needs of your child, basically, they're denying access to your child to receive an education. So it can also fall under an ADA compliance complaint. So that would be the next step, to write a compliance complaint because then, when the, the Department of Ed or OCR comes back and says, "You must do this because you are violating ADA or you're violating IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act," and then they have to do it. So if it gets to that point, that you have to push them that far to file a complaint so that the, you know, higher-ups in the state or the federal, tell them, "Hey, school district, you got to do this," then that's what it takes to get the director to agree to do it. Now, if, if that, you're, of course, you know, there's always a step number eight. I don't add that in there because varies, most of the time, 99.9% of the time, you can win with these steps. Sometimes, you have to file for hearing. So, but, but I, I highly recommend, parents, that you go through these steps first before you go hire an attorney to go to hearing because, like I said, 99.9% of the time, I win with these steps, and, and my parents don't have to go to a hearing. Hearings are, first of all, very expensive. You have to, you start off with a retainer fee of $10,000 to the attorney, and many times, it ends up being much more than that. And then you are at risk of not getting back that money because it depends on whether you win or not in hearing. And if you don't win, you might not give back your retainer that you provided to that attorney, to hire that attorney. Also, it's just a very difficult experience to go to hearing. That's all I'm going to say about that. I don't do hearings. I'm not an attorney. I don't like hearings. A lot of advocates do go to hearing, but I just, I just don't because I am an expert on the IEP process, on these seven steps, and I'm very successful with these seven steps, and I just don't like the litigation process. I've gone to hearing before. I've worked with attorneys, and I just, I don't care for that process. I'm just not a litigative, you know, kind of advocate. I'm, I'm an IEP process advocate. So those are the seven steps that are very, if you go through those steps, you prob, and you do them right, you're probably going to be successful in getting your child's needs met. So I'd like to talk to one of our Brigade members that's gone through those steps and was successful. Hala, do you want to come on and talk about your, what you were able to achieve through going through? So far, we're still, we're still in the process with Hala. She's going for a lot of other things, but, you know, she's gotten, she's gotten compensatory services for March, May, and June, right, Hala? You want to talk about that?
Yes, definitely. So, um, my son is pretty much non-verbal. So when schools shut down, um, you know, cutting speech was really big, and the teacher, the therapist, never came on. So, um, you know, I'm just like any other parent, goes on Facebook, you know, does her research, joins groups, reaches out to other parents, but you get so much, you know, mixed answers. And I wasn't ready to hire a full-on advocate, but I did need the guidance and the consultation. So I've been a, now a member since April, so right after when schools shut down, and Valerie has walked me through each and every of those steps. We got to number four, and so, you know, she taught me how to do the parent agenda for our annual meeting. She was able to look at my son's assessments from, because he's now in first grade. So his first assessments at the district, and she's like, okay, you're going to ask for all these IEEs. And she, even as simple as like, well, what if they say this? What do I say? You know, she gives you the answer. So I go into the IEP meeting a lot more confident. She helped with the partial agreement, and I didn't even know what that was. And, and she would pretty much, she would say, okay, you start it and I will review it. I'll fix it for you. And, and, you know, she makes it look more, more, you know, like a legal actual letter that I would never be able to do. Prior written notice, you know, helping me respond to those. Again, I don't know how to respond to those. I even know you should respond to those. So in each and every step of the way, I kept asking over and over to make up speech sessions for my son. And, and sure enough, she said, no doesn't mean a no. You just got it, they want to see how far you can go. And with her guidance and support and just giving me that confidence, I always went in to my IP meetings, just, you know, like I would tell my husband, like, I know, I know, we got this. Valerie told me what to do, we got this. So I think it's very beneficial, and it's been the best thing, getting that 30-minute a month, just one-on-one, me and you. You know, I have access to all these templates as well. And, and yeah, so, and responding to emails right away, like we're on the same page, as opposed to me going on Facebook, trying to ask a bunch of people that, you know, everyone has different experiences.
Yeah.
So they definitely did agree to making up speech services from March to May, so that was definitely a big success. And when, and I couldn't have done it without Valerie and being part of this, you know, brigade membership. I love it, so thank you.
Thank you, Hala. Thanks for sharing your story. So, yep, that's just one of the moms that we've had great success with and with her story. So these steps really do work. It's the same, like I said, it's the same steps I use, and you guys can, can use it too. So anybody can learn how to advocate, every parent can learn how to advocate. So I highly recommend parents that if you're not in the brigade and you're on this call, that you, you know, consider joining the brigade. I mean, every parent should, if you're not working with an advocate right now who can give you the coaching and the guidance that you need to be successful right now, pretty much you're not going to be able to win. Because if you don't take these kinds of steps that are very legal and they're powerful, and they're basically implementing your parent rights under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, then they're not going to give you what you need. Because districts are overwhelmed right now. They're overwhelmed with the fact that, you know, first of all, the school closures, they don't know how to do virtual schooling, they're scrambling, teachers don't know how to do the, you know, the technology, and, and kids aren't getting educated right now. So if you don't take action right now and step up to the plate and learn how to advocate, your kid's going to get left behind. And that's the situation right now with parents. You know, the parents that are, you know, hoping that it's going to get better or hoping that, you know, their kid's going to start learning, it's, it's, it's never gonna, it's not going to get better. It hasn't gotten better, and they're doing the same thing. There are so many teachers, you know, they have their, their minutes they're supposed to provide every day. Teachers aren't providing those academic minutes. Teachers are, are taking, you know, saying, they're using the asynchronous, you know, time that, that they are, the loophole that the feds gave them, which is they have to do synchronous, which means they're on Zoom and they're teaching the child, with, you know, the teacher and the child, it's actual live instruction. But then the asynchronous means that the teachers can go, okay, now we're going to take an hour break now, and you're going to go work independently, and you're going to do things by yourself. And then the teacher goes and eats lunch or takes a nap on your minutes that they're supposed to be teaching your child. So many teachers are coming on and teaching, you know, for 10 or 20 minutes. I mean, by the time they say hi, and all the kids say hi to each other, and they ask, you know, how you doing? They, they give a 10-minute lesson, or they go, you know, we're going to go, go to chapter five, read chapter five, and turn in this assignment. And then they go, okay, bye-bye now. It's going to be independent learning for the rest of the minutes. That's not education. And I know zillions of parents are telling me that that's what their teacher is providing. So, and I could just go on and on and on with the, with the stories of what's happening now. Of course, that parents have to be the one-on-one aide, it's the next to their kid, their kid can't access the curriculum, the kids can't get on technology, the kid can't, doesn't even know how to get on Zoom or, or Google Classrooms, or whatever it may be. It's just a big fat mess. So there's many things that, that we need to advocate for right now. All of those things are a violation of ADA for accessing the education as well as IDEA. Because if they're not working on your goals and implementing your IEP, then they're violating IDEA, and which is a federal law, they're breaking federal law. But if you don't know how to hold them accountable for breaking federal law, and, you know, you just, you just tell them, or you say it in an IEP meeting, they'll be like, oh, that's nice. They don't care if you say it. You have to take these legal steps to hold them accountable, or they're not going to stop doing it. They're not going to. So that's what I wanted to just give you guys that visual on the steps I've been talking about. Because I still have been getting a lot of questions from parents on, on those steps and what those steps mean. So does anybody have any questions about those steps? And, and, or let me know where you're at with the steps? Are you stuck or any more definition on the steps?
Valerie, we just got our PWM that denied Julian comp for SAI and speech during, you know, April, March, May. So now what would be the next steps? They denied it, then I would appeal it, that's the next step?
Yep, so let me pull this up again. Okay, so they sent it to PWN. And so now we're going to, I'm going to skip right to filing a complaint with you, Angie. Because they know what we wanted, they said no in a PWN, so I'm not going to respond in a parent letter. Okay, but we haven't, we haven't done your partial agreement yet. So that, that's where we're at, we're on number two. I, we have to write your partial agreement to the IEP first. Because what took so long with you is it took us three months just to get through the IEP. You can't write your partial agreement until the IEP's done. Okay?
Okay, yeah.
The IEP has to be completely done. I mean, they could say no in the first meeting, but, but if you have two more meetings to get through the whole thing, and they, and they go, okay, we're done now, here's the offer of faith, then you write number two, you do step number two, the partial agreement. So we haven't even gotten to step number two yet.
That's why it took so long, okay, okay.
That's why, that's why.
Yeah.
Why I haven't gone to step number two yet, because we had to get the offer of faith. So you can't, you can't jump the gun until the whole IEP's done, you've gone through your whole parent agenda, and then, and then you get the full IEP. Then you can write your partial agreement. Then they're going to write a prior written notice to our partial agreement.
Right, but unfortunately, they just wrote a PWN just to that because we haven't signed anything yet, I get it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They responded to that one request before I wrote the partial agreement because they did that like the day after your meeting or something.
We'll just wait then until we've written the partial agreement to see what else they're going to say no to, and then we put in the compliance complaint with everything.
Right, but they would have put, they would have put their answers in the PWN. They don't write one PWN per no. They'll put everything in one PWN. So that was the only thing they said no to, was that, whatever was in that PWN.
Okay, all right.
So that's where we're at, we're at step number two with you.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then, but nevertheless, even after I write the partial agreement, then I, I'm writing it simultaneously, the partial agreement and the, the complaint. Because I already know your case and I already know them, and I know that they're just going to drag their feet and they're going to, you know, play games. So I'm, I'm not going to go through three, four, I'm not doing these in the middle steps. I'm going to go partial agreement and complaint.
Yeah, because, you know, she said she was going to get in contact with Jenny, and then today she sent some kind of stupid-ass thing, letter talking about non-public agencies. So now she's going back and saying no? I mean, I don't, I don't get what the problem is.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's what I'm saying, she, they're game players.
Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
Yep, and I have the OT asking me to sit next to Julian in session. I'm like, nope, when we get the aide in, in session, they'll be able to support him. But I have a four-year-old that I'm busy with, that I can't, you know, sit around in your 30-minute session to prompt him. And, and by the way, if you want him in a separate room, you want to, you want to see him in the schoolroom now? Good luck getting any assistance from us then. If he logs off, then he logs off. I'm not going to be going back and forth to that room to ensure that he's doing what he's supposed to be doing.
Right.
That's their job, not mine. She's trying to play games and say, I would love to have you sit in session to make her job easier, and I'm not going to do it.
Yeah, well, they, and that's the opposite of what they told you to do. They told you you were too hovering and too much in the room, they wanted you out of the room. Remember?
Yeah, they can't make up their minds.
She probably doesn't know that they even said that, because she wasn't involved in that.
Oh, that's right, because she was an hour late to the meeting, you're right.
Yeah, but also that's Mercedes, that, that's your RSP teacher. She wants you out of the room, but your OT wants you in the room, so.
Yeah.
Depends on who you talk to.
Yeah, I'm not going to do all that, it's just going to be the way it is, so, yeah.
And, and also, that's a good point, because I was just telling another parent today. Video your kid, video them. So, because that's evidence. So you video them where, where, you know, if you, for the mom sitting next to the child, of course the child's going to be more successful because the mom's serving as the one-on-one aide. But, but you have to prove to them how unsuccessful your child is by videotaping them when you're not there and show, this is what's really happening, which is nothing, your kid's messing around, turning the video off, playing games on, on his phone, getting up and walking around. They're not learning, they're not listening, they're not completing tasks virtually without a mom sitting there next to them.
Exactly, and she tried to make it seem like, all I've ever seen him do school is in, in, in the living room. And you know, it seems like, and like, she's trying to make it seem because he's in the living room, he's distracted, I'm like, okay, well, I'll put him in the school office and he'll still be rolling around and getting up and playing with toys and all of that. It doesn't matter where he's at in the house, it doesn't matter.
Well, and most of the time you have him in, in his classroom.
Unless it's going to cause behaviors. If he says, I want to do it in the, you know, in the living room, for whatever reason, then I'm like, okay, we can try it, as long as you're paying attention. And then I don't want to cause extra meltdowns if I don't have to.
Right, I see, I see. Yeah, I just, because most of the time when I see the videos, he's always in his classroom.
He is, yep.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. Anybody else have any questions? Everybody's doing good on your advocacy and you're happy as a clam with virtual schooling, guys?
I have a question, Valerie.
Hi.
It's Redora, for the, for paying for the IEE wise. So in order to get reimbursed, does that mean you have to wait till you get a receipt from your provider and then send it to the district?
Yeah, they, they want to, they want proof that you, you paid.
Okay, because, yeah, so then with Dr. Perlman, he's not really going to charge you till later, till he does the assessment. But then like what I'm worried about is that, because on my stupid settlement, it says that, you know, the, the funding will be like, it will, it won't be funded basically after December 31st, if it's not done, or whatever, something like that.
That's right.
So then if he doesn't, since he said, remember that he may or may not have it done before January, but if he was to do it after January, then.
Not going to have it done.
Is not going to be like, the payment's not going to be funded.
Right, well, you need to ask Dr. Perlman that. Or, and, and, well, actually, you should ask your program specialist that. Didn't Dr. Perlman write what his schedule is? And that he's, that he's not going to have it done by then, and don't they know that?
I told him that, yeah, he won't have it, you know, I talked to Dr. Perlman, and he said he won't be able to have the assessment done by, not till January.
And what did they say?
And then they just still said, we can't, he refused the, that they supposedly, they talked to him, that, and he refused the $3,500 to be contracted with them.
I know that part, but what did they say about him not having it done by December 31st?
They didn't reply with that one.
Well, that's your question. Is you want to know, are they going to not accept it if it's past December 31st?
Okay, I'll email Megan again.
Because you have the answer to your $3,500. You know, you have to pay upfront and then you have to get reimbursed. That, that, you know that answer. Now, now your question is, are they going to accept the assessment if it's completed after December 31st? Because if they're not, then that's a problem to going, going with Dr. Perlman.
Okay.
But at this point, it's October, you know, middle, middle October. No IEE provider's going to have it done by December 31st. That's not even 60 days, when you take Christmas out.
Okay.
The only one that's going to have it done is the one going with the district's agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they, they have to take that into consideration. They have to more, be more lenient with you on, on, on the, on that timeframe. Again, your stupid attorney screwed you over by putting a date in there, like that.
Yep, that's Megan Nunes.
Yep.
So crazy, okay.
Just horrible, 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 horrible. That, your, that settlement agreement was the crappiest settlement agreement I've ever seen in my life.
I know, it's like, oh my gosh. Okay, I'll email her again and ask her.
Yeah, okay.
Redora, did you let her know that you looked at the settlement agreement and you realized how crappy it was?
No.
Yeah, so parents beware of any attorney or advocate, advocates too. You have to know who you're hiring. You have to know their track record, their reputation, how long they've been doing this. You know, are they, are they on the parent's side, or are they on the district's side? There's lots of attorneys and advocates that are on the district's side, and they pretend like they're on the parent's side. So, you know, you can get screwed by attorneys and advocates, just like you can get screwed by the district. So you have to be very careful when you hire, who you hire, and you have to do research, and you have to talk to other parents and find out who you're hiring and what, what success they've had. You know, ask other parents, you know, did you win? You know, are they good? You have to find out about these people.
Well, I will say this, Valerie, I think this has a lot of, and I'm sorry to say this, this has a lot to do with race. Because I know some private stuff about other people that have used her and were of a different race and got private, private placements for their kids right away, once there was any type of issue that what Redora has gone through.
Really?
Yeah, I'll have to tell you about that privately.
That's disgusting.
Yeah.
And that's on, because of the district or because of the attorney, or both?
No, the attorney. It's, it's so funny that I have multiple friends who are Caucasian who have gotten several private placements through using this attorney. But once it comes down to someone that's not, it seems that this happens.
Wow, rude.
Because there's, there's three mothers here that are going through this with Redora. Because there's, there's three mothers here that are going through this with Redora and they have not, and they've all had the same issue and there's been no private placement. There's been nothing for their kids. They've all gotten screwy settlements. And now that I think of my stuff, you know, it was screwy too.
Wow. Horrible. Just horrible. Yeah. Well, you, I think you guys should, should, should report them and the one that Barbara had too. Report them to the, to the.
I'm gonna report them to the bar.
Yes, you should.
She has a good review on Yelp.
Well, you need to write a bad one.
She got all these good ones.
Yeah, probably all the Caucasian moms that won. Yeah. Yeah, you should absolutely write a bad one. And say, well, if you're not white, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get a good outcome with this, with this attorney. Disgusting. Talk about discrimination. I mean, that, that's an ethical violation with the, with the bar. For sure. Anybody else have any comments? Or questions? Everybody's good then? Okay, guys. Well, I'm gonna go. I got tons of work to do. There's just craziness, craziness right now with, I'm, I'm writing about ten partial agreements and complaints right now and I can't keep up. So, so let me know if you guys have questions on that. You can always post on the, the group, the private group page, questions. I ask, I answer questions on there all the time. And if you have questions about the, how to join the brigade, I've got that on my page too, or you can ask me questions. And other than that, I'll see you guys next Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Okay, guys. Take care. Good night.